Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We're opening with county tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Call to order, the January 29th County Commissioners Meeting. Announcements, the County Commissioners Meeting is being audio and video recorded. Is there any public comment tonight that's not on the agenda for the county? Is this for the county or do you want to do it at the Select Board? Okay. Seeing no public comment, I don't know of any new business. Is there approval of the minutes in the payroll, Treasury warrants?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes 3-0. Official business tonight, we have a request for authorization to participate in the Barnstable County Invitation for Bids for Trade Contractors. Do we have any questions? Is Brian or Rob or Libby, do you want to walk us through that? Why are we doing it? And is there any advantages?
The advantage is our advantages are that in a larger group, you can potentially get better rates for certain types of services. And we've been in the Barnstable County bid before. And they require a vote of the county commissioners to get us back in. It's expired, I guess, so they want it, we would like to get back in.
Oh, it's expired. That was my question of why, if it's such, if it's so advantageous, why now versus before? I don't know if there's any particular reason.
It's just expired.
Okay.
Or expiring.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries 3-0. Adoption of the FY21 county budget. Brian's going to walk us through that.
Good evening, everyone. As we do every year, we're here to present the county budget and have a vote to adopt to send it to the county review board next week. So the county agencies are the county itself, county administration itself, and then the Registry of Deeds, which is made up administration and deeds excise. Revenue sources for the three entities are the town assessment, deeds excise revenue, recording fees, corrections deed excise, which is specifically allocated to the public safety facility, registry of deeds excise fund balance, which has specific limitations on being able to be used for operations of the registry of deeds specifically itself, and then the county fund balance if necessary. Fiscal 21 projected revenue, we've worked with the registrar to come up with this. The town assessment can stay the same at the recommended $170,201. Deeds excise receipts were projecting $478,125, which is broken up between county administration of $286,875 and registry of deeds in revenue of $191,250, recording fees of $171,500, and then the aforementioned $250,000 for corrections deeds excise. If all comes to pass, the total projected revenue would be $1,069,826. So the town assessment is made up of what's known as the county funding requirement, also the maintenance of effort. By law, we have to provide a certain amount of non-deeds excise revenue to the registry every year. The amount increases by two and a half percent. So the FY21 county funding requirement to the registry was $337,615. The town's portion is the amount after the $171,500 from the slide before for the recording fees. It's slightly less than the $172,001, but we have, we've kept it at the same recommended level as we have for the past four or five years. Next year, it may actually creep over the $172,001, but I don't think it will be by a lot. Projected expenses, county administration is level funded, as you'll see in the next slide, at $258,964. The primary amount in this budget is specifically for any legal expenses with any of the work that they can, within the county for any roadways or things of that nature. Registry of deeds, $486,511, which is three full-time employees, administration expenses, and any deeds excise or special projects related to modernization and updates of the infrastructure within the office itself, and then the public safety facility debt service of $250,000. So all told, we're projecting and recommending a budget of $995,475. On this slide, I do apologize, there was two typos within the registry of deeds. The payroll was, it should be read 403,662. Mainly, there's small increases within health insurance and retirement, and then the salaries within that line for the registry of deeds. The total there is $448,750 for the operation of the registry of deeds itself, and then deeds excise expenses, rent and copier expenses and things of that nature, $37,760. Gives you the $486,000 for the registry, the $250,000 for the transfer. So the way the $250,000 works, just to let everybody know, for those that aren't familiar with it, that is actually transferred to, we transfer it to the town and we use it to pay debt service related to the public safety building, excuse me. It's for 20 years, we're in year 10 of that. The total debt service on the building is just shy of $900,000. So the amount, and it was done by debt exclusion, and the amount that we raised in the debt exclusion is the debt service minus that 250 every year. So this 250 is actually helping offset the impact to the taxpayers. So the next steps, as I mentioned, on February 4th, 2020, we will go before the county review committee, which is the finance committee, to review and explain the budget, and hopefully they'll adopt it at that meeting as well.
It's another job for FinCom, county review committee. The question I was going to ask to explain was the public safety debt service, and you did. Brian and I met before this meeting, and I had a bunch of questions, and the main one was the payroll. So anybody who is at home who was looking at this, the FY21 payroll was 448,000. It was a $66,000 jump, but it was just a typo. It's only a $20,000 jump. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Absolutely.
Any comments or questions? Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries 3-0. Any commissioner reports or comments? Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, over to you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I will call the January 29th Select Board meeting to order. Couple of changes to the agenda. Sorry. We don't have any minutes tonight, and we will not be adopting the cable contract tonight, which is under, oh, the cable license, Town Manager's Report Number Two. It's just not quite ready. So without that announcements, and we will be adding an announcement from the Health Department.
This meeting is being video and audio recorded as well, and then the announcement from the Health Officer.
Okay, there we go. Roberto Santa Maria from the Director of the Health Department. We just wanted to address a lot of the concerns that are starting to come up about two outbreaks that are going on along in the world. Right now, there is a strong influenza A outbreak in the Northeast United States that we are tracking and monitoring, and we do have cases here. One of the things that's really important to, to make sure is that when you're, if you're vaccinated, it is still possible to get this virus, to get influenza. I myself was one of the cases, even though I was vaccinated in October. If you're having symptoms, you know, sudden onset of fever, aches, pains, chills, self-isolate, go home, stay home, call your primary care. They may, if the symptoms are early enough, they may actually prescribe what's called Tamiflu, which is an antivirus, an antiviral medication that will cut your infectious period almost in half, if not even more. It is worth looking into. Make sure you practice good hand hygiene, cough hygiene, cough into your sleeve, not your hand. And in the situation that you do end up have to go to the hospital or to a patient, to a primary care, please wear a mask, they are providing it at the hospital entrances. That being said, there's a lot of information out there and a lot of misinformation out there about the novel coronavirus that we're seeing, the outbreak we're seeing in Wuhan, China. There are cases in the United States, there are two suspect cases in New Hampshire that are being isolated right now, pending investigations from the laboratory. It is, it is an illness of concern. The World Health Organization has not declared an illness of global concern yet due to how effective the health departments outside and including China, but the health departments have been really good at isolating potential cases. There is a possibility that it can enter the greater Boston area through these two cases because you do show symptoms after the initial infectious period. So in the same way, just like the flu, make sure you're washing hands, make sure you're covering your coughs correctly, don't be, don't touch your face. If you show any sort of symptoms, self-isolate and contact your primary care. A lot of the misinformation that's out there is, you know, there's so far, there's no miracle cure, there's no vaccine yet, they are working on it, it is already genetically mapped, and they are working on a vaccine. But one thing that's really important to come out there, we are hearing about, you know, over 100 deaths, that is still less than .03 of a percent of the cases. Only .022 of all cases are in the fatal, have the fatal version of it. And it's usually because they have some sort of an underlying illness, respiratory infection of some sort, like COPD or some sort of cardiovascular issue. So it is really important to pay attention to those symptoms, and it's really important to pay attention to those numbers. It is not to global pandemic scale, like you're hearing in some of the more, for lack of a better word, conspiracy theory websites. We urge people to go to the CDC.gov if you have any questions. The Massachusetts State Department of Public Health has information on both coronavirus and the flu virus. If you haven't gotten your flu vaccine, there are still flu vaccines available. And we will be putting out information on all our social media and on the Board of Health and the Health Department's webpage. But it is no cause for panic. That is one of the things that's really important. We've been receiving a lot of calls, and I've spoken with the infectious disease nurse at the hospital, and she's been receiving a lot of phone calls as well. We are, we do not have any cases on Antucket yet. We do not even have cases in the Boston area yet. So we are, it's still something that we're just monitoring. In the situation that it escalates in any way, we will definitely get information out in a timely manner.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
The flu, the type A and this coronavirus, when you contract it, do you have symptoms immediately, or can it, are they both the same, they can sit there for a week?
The coronavirus actually can, you can actually carry it for almost two weeks before you start showing symptoms.
And what about flu?
And flu, you can carry it only a couple days, maybe two to three days before you start showing symptoms. With the flu, the good news about the flu is you were only ever infectious for a few hours before you show symptoms. Once you start coughing, you, and you get that headache, that's, that's the first flu symptom, and that's usually coupled with the infectious period. With coronavirus, unfortunately, the infectious period is a whole week ahead of time.
And the symptoms are the same, though?
And the symptoms are exactly the same. It feels like it's the same, coronavirus is in the same family as SARS and MERS that we all heard about over the last 10, 15 years. It is the same type of virus, but there is a vaccine on the way, they are working on it. It just, they just can't push something into the market that it hasn't been tested in a clinical trial.
It's great advice, if you think you have it, just don't go to work.
Just don't go to work.
Don't be a hero.
And any symptoms, do not go to work. The reasons for vaccines aren't only to protect yourself, but to protect the people around you who cannot have vaccines. It is the same reasons why we don't allow people to bring peanuts to school when there's a person with a peanut allergy. Same concept. You get vaccinated because some people cannot get vaccines. You're protecting them just as much as you're protecting yourself.
Thank you so much. Important information. This is the public comment portion of our agenda for something that's otherwise not on our agenda. I think Campbell has something?
Good evening, Campbell Sutton here. I just wanted to clear up the record based on the last time I was here. I was reading in the I and M that when I withdrew my petition regarding zoning, it, the newspaper says that I had withdrawn, withdrawn the petition because it would have changed town zoning bylaws on ground cover, which is true. That article, and that I said, that article would have too significant of an impact on ongoing and future developments and should not be implemented. I did not say that, just to be clear. I did say that I took the action because it became apparent to me that the omission of an effectiveness date, i.e. upon passage at annual town meeting, or something of that sort, meant that it went into effect immediately without a vote by anyone, but with many unintended consequences to plans already in the works. It was for this reason that I took the time and effort to regather the signatures needed and submit it before the holidays just passed. So just for clarity. Okay, thank you.
Not the first time that you have to clarify. Approval of minutes, warrants, impending contracts. We do not have minutes tonight. Approval of payroll and Treasury warrants?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Me opposed. Motion carries unanimously, and there are no contracts tonight. So committee reports, Mr. Welch. We have the Capital Program Committee Chair here.
Good evening, everyone. Stephen Welch, Capital Program Committee Chair. Nice to see you. Glad to see no one's exhibiting flus-like symptoms. I'm here tonight just to give you a brief summary and answer any questions that I may on our fiscal year 21 report and recommendations. A quick overview of 67 capital requests totaling approximately 53 million. We had put forth recommendations with funding sources for 59 requests, 67 at 53 million. We put forward 59 at just under 43 million. We've broken this down within the report with a summary of the capital allocations by account, a summary of funding sources, and FY21 requests that are greater than $1 million. Those are broken up into the general fund and the enterprise accounts respectively. I've also included the projected cost of the borrowing impacts for the taxpayers, and that would be for the debt and capital exclusion if they were to carry. Those numbers would be approximately, the residential rate would increase from $33.45 per thousand to $3.53 per thousand. And sorry to jump around on this, Erica.
It's on page five.
On the, yeah, you'd be on page five. The commercial rate would increase from $5.86 per thousand to $6 per thousand. Within the report, we've also included a statement of our procedures leading up to and including our review of the individual capital requests and our procedural recommendations. Included are appendices, which are the capital requests by account and department with great detail, including the description by the department heads and any recommendations or comments of note by Capital Program Committee. We've also broken out the capital request by funding source there as opposed to the summary within the body of the report in detail, and included a few other pieces of information. One is the appropriations and expenditures to date for any FY21 requests, that's Appendix F. We've included a copy of our capital project request form, which is actually a specimen of what we use in an online software environment, what department heads input information into, and that we then review. And let's see, the town in Antucket tax rate history. We did not include our 10-year, the, a copy of the 10-year SIP, which is more of a list than a schedule at this point, and I'll speak on that probably in a moment. So with that, if there were any questions or comments, I'm happy to answer them if I can.
I just had one clarification, and Stephen and I talked about this already. It's on, sorry, I just lost it. It's just a little tiny thing. On page A2. A2 of 5?
Yeah.
It's the Transportation 17-004. The title is Surfside Road Area Phase 2, Lovers Lane Roadway Improvements. We changed that name because it was, it said Okawara Lovers Lane and Monahasset, but it was just going to be for Lovers Lane. But in the description, it still says all three. So if this description is to go further, or if anybody was to read this, I just want to clarify that it's just for the Lovers Lane road and area and not, I don't want people to think that it's a bike path going down Monahasset.
And just to put the finer point on that, so that's a three, that's a three-road, Surfside Road Area improvements, three roads in particular, phased over the individual road areas. The second phase is Lovers Lane, that's what's in there now. We did alter the description, the request title to reflect that, however, we left the description as it was, the broader, as it was included by the Transportation Department.
I have a question on the same page, it's under the Transportation. Yep, the 1901, oh, the traffic data collection. I know you're going less than what was asked for, and typically there was a note as to why, so I don't know if you had a description as to why you didn't fully fund that?
Oh, we, I believe we had gotten a revised number. So the original request reflected the .15, and then we had gone with 120.
Okay, it's in line with our strategic plan, so I was just wondering why.
Yeah, we, we weren't recommending less than what was requested.
Are there any questions from the public?
So if I may just comment, one of the things we've done in the past where we've continued to do are procedural recommendations. Before we get into that, I want to thank town administration, in particular Libby, our finance department staff, and Brian, who put up with my digging and drilling and turning over and asking more and more questions, and in order to facilitate our meetings and make it more productive for our membership and for the town. So I think in the spirit of that, it's important to understand that everyone is doing, I think, a tremendous amount of work and lifting in order to get the current upcoming fiscal year project requests in and the information that relates to those prepared and out for our evaluation. Our evaluation takes the better part of a half a year, meeting nearly weekly. In order to complete, we're hoping that the, we're shooting to develop the town's 10-year capital improvement program, which is the tent, we call the 10-year SIP. Typically is shown in the, in the format of a worksheet with, by department and requests over a 10-year period. And we're, we're hopeful to develop that aspect of the capital program review to the same level as this report. And I think given the volume, the complexity and the cost of upcoming capital projects, it's of vital importance to the community that we, we as a community are able to get to that level of maturity in our capital review program process and evaluations. So looping back, so we provided in detail what needed resources are and some other elements. Those are within the procedural recommendations, and we would ask that you help to bring those to fruition. So in closing, I just mentioned that I brought a few extra copies, hard copies, they're at the table by the door, and I understand that a copy of the report will be on the Capital Program Committee's webpage, along with our previous reports. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of the time and effort that you've put in and that your whole committee has.
You're welcome, and I'll convey it back to the committee.
I just wanted to add in that I found the report very helpful, just being new to the board, and especially the appendices, you know, if any public wants to look at it, I think it was really helpful to see how you guys go through each one. It really explains, like, even just the code I was looking at, if something says, you know, NPS 20, that means it was requested in the FY20, and just, I found all of that to be really helpful, so thank you.
Thank you. We're actually going to be working on some developments with those. So that's an Elfin America that we developed for department year sequence of the request came in, and we're looking at trying to develop that into a database where it will be parent child with things like whether it's a phased request or supplemental request, so that leadership subjects yourself and the FinCom would be able to simply look at the request code and get a bunch of information from that immediately. So we're, we're trying to make changes that will be helpful to the whole process.
If I can add to that wishlist of changes, if we can know if something is from the Green Community Initiative, I think that would be really helpful. I think you guys are working on the mitigation plan? Hazard mitigation?
Yeah.
Is that, that's going to be noted of which project is that? Maybe if something has to do with the Green Communities.
Once we, I don't think we've received the designation formally yet, but yes, that's a really good point. Most likely, that will come in the form of grants, but there may be other projects we're doing that would be similar to hazard mitigation, so yeah, that's a good idea.
We can annotate in different regards so that that shows up.
Chris, it's a good point, similar to just putting, you know, strategic plan on there so you know kind of why it's there, and that it's connected to other things. Yeah.
Thank you.
Good.
I got some things too, but you can, you don't, just more comments, you can sit down.
Okay, thank you.
The, I wanted to be clear on, I believe it's, can you go up a little further or pull back down? I'm sorry. It was right underneath that first one that I talked about. I'll find it. It is A2. So it's Wade Drive and Amelia Drive? Yep. I just, I've seen a lot of things on social media, and I've gotten some comments at the coffee shop of, is this the roundabout at Fairgrounds in Old South? Is this a roundabout at Amelia Drive? It is not. This is just for Wade Drive and Amelia. So I just wanted to make that clarify on the record, has nothing to do with roundabouts. Things can get out of control, and it's confusing.
And there was some notation early on about Amelia Roundabout that is not proposed and hasn't been proposed in a while.
We asked the same questions at Capcom, so I want to be clear on that. The facilities master plan, I think, is really going to help us with the 10-year CIP, Capital Improvement Plan. I think that's just another reason why this is such an important thing to do, an island-wide town facilities master plan, to really help with that, that SIP. I know, sitting in Capcom, like, I know that's coming, but it would just be really helpful to make bigger decisions.
We were talking about next steps on that today.
Yep. And in this report, there's a bunch of next steps and things that we're working on. This is the third year I've been on Capcom, and every year we've layered on different things, and it gets a little better each year. Let's see what else I have. One of the things that we focused on more this year than I think in the past was capacity. Could the department complete the project or at least start it in the fiscal year? And that was a big question of ours. And you'll notice when you're going through, some things weren't funded, that's not on every single one. But a lot of them, that's one of, that's one of the main reasons. So it was, could they, could they get it started? And then we look at prior projects that maybe, that were connected to it, that maybe, that weren't started yet. So we were kind of trying to, as much as we could, when we had the department head and Brian and Libby in the room, kind of looking at the bigger picture, even though sometimes you don't see it right in here. In the rank of relative importance, what we call the Rory, has developed and gotten better. It's, we talked a lot this year about everybody's take on that and their interpretation of it, to make sure we all, in generally, we're taking it the same way, so the end result would be better, even though Stephen can get into things that are way over my head of. of, it's designed for us to be as subjective as we want, and it still works, but it's, but the Rory has gotten better. And overall, I just thought it's a really thorough and well-done report, and let's appreciate, Stephen does most of the work on this report, you know, even though we meet for six months on it, and there's a lot more to do and keep layering on, but I just wanted to thank him and everybody else on the, on the Capcom. It's been fun to be a part of it. That's all my comments.
I had one more clarification question. It's on page five of the report where it's the taxpayer impact. For each one, that's about $3. Is that per project, or is that the average if all of these get passed through?
We could ask Libby or Stephen.
So those are actually reported individually?
So if each one goes through, then the average is 18, about 18 bucks? Thanks.
Sure.
The town clerk requests for approval and execution of a warrant for March 3rd for the presidential primaries.
Move to approve?
I just had one quick question on it. At the bottom of, it says where to distribute it, and that is different bulletin boards. And I was just wondering if we can add a couple of places, like Holgate's Laundry or churches, just to spread more to other communities, or is that something that's mandated by the state?
The amount of places that we post the warrant is prescribed by the bylaw. So, you know, it's the document that's thick, it's paper, it blows away in the wind. I don't know how much people really look at it. We certainly could put it more places. We're not required to though, so it's just a matter, it has to be placed by a constable. So I guess it would be a matter of what precedent you want to set.
Okay. I was just wondering how those locations were determined.
The number of locations is determined by the bylaw.
Totally welcome to put one up at the laundry.
Well, potentially any business that wants a copy of it could certainly post it.
Could request it.
On their own, yeah.
Yeah. Thanks. You made a motion?
I did.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And Nancy, this has early voting too, correct? So there is a week prior of early voting if people are not away on school vacation. And next we have the reappointment of constables. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up, we have real estate items, and I think that Ken Bogrand is going to walk us through them.
The first item is, this started at town meeting in 2010, and then continued on town meeting in 2011, then again in town meeting in 2013, and most recently at this year. The, what this is, is the completion of a, of the disposition of a small parcel of land, an unconstructed roadway, private way out in Surfside. And the, this is, this, as with all of the yard sale situations, are reviewed by the Real Estate Assessment Committee. They reviewed this, and from the time after it first came in, they indicated that it was important to record a pedestrian easement across a portion of a corner of the property, which in fact is part of your package. And so with that recommendation, we move that, we recommend that you move to approval, approve this disposition as provided for.
I talked to Ken about this, and we went over in detail that the pedestrian walkway, it's not a, it's not an access to anything else, just an area.
It's just a corner.
For that neighbor to walk into their yard. It's not even a driveway.
No. It's an, it's completely un, non-completed roadway at all, it's just a pathway.
But it's still being preserved.
Yeah.
Okay, so as long as that's in there?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is with respect to disposition of a paper road in Sconset. The paper road, as you can see, goes all three sides of this particular parcel, and this is a different procedure than we do with other yard sale properties, because in fact, the value of this particular amount of land is more than $35,000. And so with respect to the statute, we provide a request for a proposal to, to anyone, it's published in the newspaper, and anyone can come in and make a bid on it. There was only one bid made with, with respect to this, it was by the Butter, and the bid was over the minimum price that was set with respect to this particular three parts, three parcels of the, of the paper road. And the bid was in excess of, it was $59,282.09. This, what, what's, again, this is reviewed by the Real Estate Assessment Committee, and this provides an additional about 20,000 square feet to the, to the property, but it does not give the property any additional rights with respect to subdivision or not, because even with this addition, it will be an undersized lot. What it will do is it will provide some additional ground cover in terms of if they want to make the building slightly larger than would have been possible without the additional three paper roads. Again, it was the vote of the Real Estate Assessment Committee to move forward with this and recommend its approval to the Select Board.
Did they have any issues at all? Did they, that was worked out?
There were, there were no issues whatsoever with respect to this. And the, the, this was part of, of three prop, three paper roads in the area at the next real estate meeting of the Select Board. The other two parcels will be coming forward for, on a similar basis.
Is that on each side?
One, there's, they are off, off to this side.
Okay.
Up. We're still negotiating with the person on the left-hand side. We haven't come to an agreement with that person yet, but we have with respect to the other, the other two people, that parcels will be coming forward.
So they're essentially all buying their half of the, they're all buying their half of the road?
They are, yeah.
And why did we choose all three instead of just the two sides?
This, the fact is, is that, that this road doesn't, that street doesn't provide access to anything else. And so from the point of view of the yard sale, what you're trying to do is to in fact make title better, be able to provide a benefit to the town in terms of providing additional tax revenue, and adding, and getting rid of something that could be an issue with respect to title down the road. So there's a benefit to the homeowner in terms of getting more land and clear title. There's a benefit to the town in terms of getting revenue with respect to the disposition of the property, and then on an ongoing basis, additional revenue, tax revenue with respect to the land that is now part of this property.
Thanks. Is there a motion? Oh.
Oh, no.
Sorry. Oh, you're both here for this? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Emily Molden for the Nantucket Land Council. I recognize it's sort of the end of this process. I just had a question on a couple of these, and this one I just was looking at today on the aerial, and just specifically in reference to the southern portion of that parcel, was just noticing its proximity to the town land to the south and the Sconset sewer beds. And I just wondered if the board and the committee had taken into account whether there was any value or if it was worthy of consideration of maintaining this in case in the future this area does become more erosive, there's more erosion down there. Just something that had occurred to me because of its location, and I just wondered if that had been considered by the board and the committee. Thank you.
Those factors are part of what is looked at by the committee, and they made a determination that this was an appropriate thing to bring forward to the Select Board.
Good evening. My name's Rick Atherton. I have a couple of comments on this real estate transaction. When you look at this, you say, gee, it just looks like a regular old yard sale. And I'd say it's not a regular old yard sale. As, I hope I'm not mistaken, but my sense is that on the southern side, the side facing the ocean, the town owns all the land from the property edge to the water. So you're in effect selling, it's not exactly beachfront, there's a long way to go, but it's, that's the idea. And I just don't think the town should be selling property in this kind of an area close to the water without, at the very least, a full board here to discuss the issues related to that kind of concern, that it's, as I say, it's not regular. Also, it's an area that you don't know quite what's going to happen with erosion over time here. I think Low Beach has been stable for a while, but it has not always been that way. And you're providing greater ground cover for more building to go on in an area that might be at risk at some point. So I would ask that you not vote on this tonight, wait for a full board, and at the very least, I think the southern piece, as I think of it, or eastern, should not be included in the sale at all. And I would not, in my own mind, recommend you move forward with the terms presented to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
This, this will not create any more potential ground cover to build on. Is that right?
No, it will.
It will, it will give some additional ground cover. It will not allow any subdivision, because in fact, the, even with the additional amount of land, the property is still undersized for zoning. The, the amount of ground cover, because this is, is Lug 3, will be 3% of the 20,000 square feet, or three times two, about 600 square feet.
Was there a discussion amongst the committee about preserving that low, that lower portion towards the water?
There was not discussion with respect to that aspect.
I wonder if there would be value to have the committee evaluate their thoughts on, on that point, since, I mean, I don't think that there's a rush to have to do this tonight.
No.
And I think it might be, might be worth more discussion, and we are a short board tonight, so.
It's fine.
I would be fine to put it off.
I'm leaning towards that as well, but a question for maybe Libby. The Coastal Resiliency Advisory Committee, will they anytime soon be weighing in on things like this? Are we, are we a year out for that kind of?
I don't know if there's anybody in the room from that committee. Is anybody on there?
Is it part of their?
It's, looking at, at vulnerable areas is, you know, that is part of their work, sure. I don't really know how far off they are from making full-on recommendations, but I don't think it's too soon. Perhaps within the next year.
Okay. I was thinking if, I'm not going to say the acronym, but the Coastal Resiliency Advisory Committee, if they were able to help us with policy on something like this. I think I agree with Dawn, if it's not urgent, and we can get more kind of clarification on that bottom part.
I mean, are we in, do we have any problems with this because it was put out to bid, and the bid's been accepted?
Because of what?
Because of, because the, the bid came in higher than what was put out and so forth.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, the fact is, is that, that, that the, the notice indicated that this was what being, was being offered based on the recommendation of the Real Estate Assessment Committee. So, and the bid, the bid came in, in accordance with the terms that were put out for bid. So I don't know the answer to your question.
Okay. I just, so I, I think it might be valuable for us to just put it off and answer those questions?
Sure.
So that we have, have a full picture.
And can we put it on a, do we have to wait another month if it's, if it's, if there's some timeframe where we have to do it quicker than we thought?
Well, how often is the Real Estate Committee?
Now, what, REAC is going to be meeting probably next week because of the fact that it's going to be dealing with responses to the citizens warrant articles, making a recommendation on that part, so it can be raised in that agenda if that was, be the, the desire of the board.
Okay. That'd be perfect. That sounds good, and we'll just put it back on this agenda as soon as it's ready.
Yeah. Okay. Do you need a motion to, so is it, no? Erica's saying no.
To extend? Or a consensus is okay?
Yeah.
It's not a public hearing?
Right.
Okay. Number three?
The next item is with respect to disposition of a parcel on Morgan Square. Again, as with the others, this was reviewed by the Real Estate Assessment Committee, and it is a parcel, as you see in yellow on there, it doesn't affect any access to any properties in the area, and so it is a recommendation that that be disposed of in accordance with the provisions provided initially at the town meeting in 2011.
I didn't see any issues with this one.
Neither did I. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next one is with respect to two paper roads on Bartlett Farm. The, there are lots 90 and, parcel 90 and 91. There are two different reasons with respect to dealing with it, because one of them goes, will be attached to a small parcel. It will not make that parcel subdivisible, and it'll be used for residential and farming purposes. The other one is, would be added to the 27-acre parcel that the farm owns, which is already a subdivisible lot. So we didn't put the usual condition in that, that the lot that it's being attached to can't be subdivided, because in fact, that lot already is subdivitable. So that's, that is sort of what I would point out as a difference between what is usually coming forward with respect to the provisions that are, the recommendations made with Real Estate Assessment Committee relative to no subdivitability. There is, the committee took a look at it, and it did not seem, provide that there was any problem with respect to taking away access to any of the things in the area, and so therefore, the committee, again, Real Estate Assessment Committee, made the recommendation to move forward with the two separate transactions relative to these lots in terms of the sale to Bartlett Farm.
Anybody have any questions or concerns? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next one is, is different from what we've been talking about with respect to yard sales. This is a consent to conveyance of property at 17 Clarendon Lane, Clarendon Street in Tom Nevers. Originally, the town had deeded this property to the Housing Authority, and the terms of the deed were that the Housing Authority was to build a structure on it that was to be affordable. The Housing Authority did not build that structure, and the deed would provide that. If it didn't do that within a certain period of time, the property could revert back to the town. What's happened is that the property is now being sold to an individual who will be building a structure, and there will be covenants on the property with respect to keeping it affordable. So what in effect we're doing is achieving what was the intent of the original transaction, namely to make this affordable housing in Tom Nevers. And so what, what the document that is being provided for is a consent to allowing this to happen, so that there's a question, it clears up any question as to the title of the person buying the property because of this provision in the original deed from the town to the Housing Authority. And it is a recommendation to move forward with this as well.
Yep. And just to be clear, it said, this is at the 150% covenant restriction.
That's correct.
Not, not a shy unit.
No, no.
So it won't go on shy?
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to lean on my fellow. Do you have questions?
I was just going to ask, so we deeded it to the Housing Authority?
Right.
And now they're selling it, or are we selling it?
No, the Housing Authority is selling it.
Okay. And did they purchase it from us, or did we just?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
They bought it from us?
You would have given it to them.
We gave it to them.
At first it's the-
There's been give and take.
Right. At first it didn't sit well with me, and I don't think I really truly understood it, but the end result is, is good. Just like, my first thought was, all right, we're giving an entity this land, and now they're selling it.
Yeah.
Is it just a buck?
We sold it to them for?
Right. But then, and then they're, and then they're selling it.
But the, the proceeds are coming back to the Housing Authority. So they're coming back to a, a town entity with respect to, that has a mandate relative to affordable housing.
Yeah. I mean, the, the end result's great. It'd be nice if it was on the shy list, but that's another one of our goals, is to get more 150 and.
Yeah. It's, it's a total other need.
Right.
And it, it's very hard to make the numbers work in the shy units on a single unit property. They need to be subsidized generally.
Yeah. It's my understanding that this is achieving the exact same result as was originally intended. The hiccup in the process here is that the NHA or Housing Authority did not actually build the house as they originally were obligated to, and were simply allowing the new owner to do that, still with the same restrictions it would have had.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there enough land to do two houses and have?
No.
More affordable housing?
I asked that question too.
Yeah.
No, but it's really tiny.
Yeah. Can you remind, remind me again how big is the lot? Did it say?
The coordinates are in there. It's, it's the measurements.
I don't know the exact square footage, Jason.
Good. I'm just curious. Yeah. I think I understand it, understand it better now.
Yeah.
Like Tucker said, it's achieving the same. The objective is the same. It just didn't, went a different way.
The result is the same. It's just being done in a different way.
Yep.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Town managers report.
Okay, so we've got the remainder of our second quarter fiscal '20 budget reports, beginning with the Island Home, which the finance director is going to handle.
You can start right there. Good evening, and thank you. We're here to discuss the second quarter of fiscal '20 for our Island Home. As you can see in the analysis, revenue in the second quarter totaled $987,000, which is 22% or 170,000, 75,000, excuse me, increase compared to quarter two of fiscal '19. Majority of that increase is attributable to a couple of things. There was a change in the rate. We, we received a small increase in Medicare and Medicaid rates, as well as an increase. We ended the, the quarter with 37 residents, or 84% occupancy for, for the, the second quarter. So we've seen an increase in the residents in the, at the facility, which is obviously translated, excuse me, into some increased revenue. We continue to review this. We're working with the business office and, and staff to continue to look at this on a very close basis, on a weekly basis when, after the week's over, just to, to see where we're at, and to hopefully that this trend will continue, that we'll see the occupancy at a higher level, which will also help us as we begin budgeting into, for, as we finalize budgets for fiscal '21. Expenses were down about 8%, $126,000. Some of this is due to timing of staffing coming on or, or leaving, and subsequently to, subsequent to that is also the medical insurance portion of that. Professional services was up about $20,000 year-over-year, mainly due to the visiting nurses, the traveling nurses that we have. We continue to, again, work with the, the business office there to, to look at this and review this constantly. After every payroll, we're updating and project, doing the projections to make sure that we're going to stay within budget A, but if there's an issue, that we'll be able to address it in time for, for the annual town meeting. So if you have any questions, I'd be certainly happy to do my best to answer them for you.
No questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Tom Raft Airport Manager. As you see, the revenues are up slightly, about 2%, $281,000 for the first six months of the year. The operating expenses are down about $156,000 or 2%. So we're still tracking ahead of last year. I'd like you to look at the summary, though. Erica, if you could just scroll up a little bit. I think of note here, no, down, I'm sorry. The interesting note here is that you see last year, we had $429,000 reliance on a transfer from retained earnings, and later on, we had a $400,000 transfer from our fuel revolver. And that's not in this year. So we're working our best not to rely on those, although we will need the funds from the fuel revolver for the rehabilitation that we're going to be undergoing in the fall. So, and I think as you see the projected balance at the end of the December 31st, about 5.8 million in the fund. Again, we still have another slow quarter coming up, and then we get back into the, a little bit better season, so.
So what were the main causes of the revenue going up and expenses going down?
The revenue was PFC generation, as well as land. PFC, I think, was up 88,000, if I'm not mistaken.
What, what's that for, those who don't know?
Passenger facility charge. It's $4.50 per end plane passenger, passengers get onboard here and fly away. And on the expense side, majority of that is probably is payroll. We haven't backfilled, and we've made some adjustments, things like that.
If revenue's up and expenses down, I wanted to give you a chance to, you know, pat yourself on the back a little bit.
Well, thank you. But I think also our land renegotiation of leases, leasing additional land in Bunker Road, has increased our revenue significantly on that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Water?
Good evening, Mark Willett, Wanta Comet Water. So we're see, we saw a small decrease in revenues, not on the water service side. That was up on the water use side. Again, continued, we're continuing to add more services but use less water, which is a good thing. What's interesting is it seems like every winter for the past four or five winters, this trend is getting a little bigger and bigger percent, 3%. It used to be 1%. It's growing. I think that can be attributed to a lot of the property use that we're finding out. The more research we do, as Airbnb comes more, becomes more popular, VRBO types of, type of places like that, you had, used to have winter rentals. It seems like the properties, there's not as many winter rentals anymore. I think everybody knows somebody that used to have a year-round rental or seasonal rental, and they're doing more and more Airbnb and other ways to rent property. So we're seeing, right now, we have 25% of our meters, over 2,500 meters, there's zero reed meters this winter. That wasn't, you know, that number's increasing every winter. So I think how people are using their property in the winter is changing, and that's reflective in that drop every year of water use.
So the using less water isn't, like, we're all being more conservative with our water use?
I think, I think part of it is, and I, it all goes back to when we had the sewer break, and that all went out. We never really saw the bump back after the sewer break when the board recommended that people conserve. We all, we stayed at that number, and now we're, we're increasing the savings on that. And I don't know if it's just directly people trying to save more, if there's actually a property use change in, in the winter, more empty houses. The zero reed meters is, is a big, kind of a big proof of that. We're not used to seeing those kind of numbers in the winter of zero use, and not just school vacation week, you know, coming up. It's started earlier and, and going later. But other than that, we're in a pretty good place. Our inventory was up quite a bit, working with Brian last year with our budget, and we, we moved some money from, it's actually cheaper to replace the whole meter than it is the battery pack that runs it. Another one was the, it's other equipment and supplies. As I stated last time up here back in the summer, in August, we lost our, our survey equipment broke, our RTK unit, it's called. It's $30,000 for that. And we've purchased more of the down, downwell data loggers to better track the groundwater aquifer and its quality. Those are about $6,000 apiece. The goal is to have about 50 or 60 of those out within the next year that continually collect data that we can download with our smartphones and put into a database to look at. Other than that, I think Wanta Comet's in a pretty good place. Wisconsin is almost never changing. It's, it is also seeing the, the water use in the winter drop a little bit. Revenues are down a little bit on the water use side. We are seeing more connections in Wisconsin. I know there's some plans kicking around for some more subdivisions out there, so that'll continue. We've saved money on engineering services in Wisconsin again over the quarter. We're starting to do more and more ourself. We're going to try more of that at Wanta Comet. And I think streamlining everything between us and Wanta Comet, and changing out equipment in the pump stations in Wisconsin, so it actually matches what we have in Wanta Comet. So it's more running one system instead of two separate systems now. And as we continue to do that more and more, we'll see more cost savings as we get close to running exact same equipment. So when someone comes down for Wanta Comet, they're actually working for Wisconsin as well, when they work on, on the pumps and, and controls of the pumps. But Wanta Comet seems to be moving forward more and more to make it seem more seamless, more, more acting like one department, not two, even though they are two separate ones. But Wisconsin's in a good place as well. I'd like to thank Brian and his team for putting all this stuff together for us. I know it's, it's hectic for every department. He's always available to answer questions.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to start just to let everyone know that National Water Main, our vendor for cleaning sewers and CCTV work, are back on the island. They started a week ago. So you're going to probably see the trucks around and maybe get some calls at the town. But just, I just want to let everyone know that they're here, and they're, they're concentrating on a lot of the areas that we took them off in the sewer force mains, and we put them back out in the outlying areas. So they're being, they're, they're all over the place. They're doing a lot of cleaning for us. Again, we're, we're looking at, our revenue is down. And again, that, that plays a lot to what Mark was saying with water usage. It's the same with us on the other end. You know, an example in Wisconsin, we're seeing between 9,000 and 11,000 gallons of flow a day this time of year. Normally, we were between 13,000 and 15,000. So there's definitely some changes somewhere that we don't know exactly where. But we're actually having to feed the plant in Wisconsin with influence from town. We have to take a tank load at a time to keep the plant alive because the flows are so low. And again, that's, just been over the last couple of years, there's been a significant change in, in people out in Wisconsin, so.
Is this the lowest that you've ever seen it, since you've been?
Since I've been here, this is the lowest I've seen it, yeah. I mean, 9,000 gallons a day is, is nothing. And so we have to supplement it with food, bringing it in from Surfside, so. And, but again, that goes, goes to usage. And again, it's a timing issue on some of the, the revenues with the privilege fees going out, when they go out, the holidays. So we're just about where we were last year, without any concerns. Again, some of the numbers are mostly time-based. We did come through a lull at the holidays, then, but we're back up again now. I think we had 16, 17 permits today, I looked at, to, to approve. So we had a big lull, but now we're back up with issuing permits, mostly for Shimo, the Shimo Project area. And our, our expenses were up slightly, and a lot of that has to do with, we're still trying to bring the full department into compliance with OSHA. We're, we're spending an awful lot of funds on specialized training to bring us into OSHA compliance and, and equipment. We actually had a few hour session today with the fire department where we were doing some combined confined, confined space entry and rescue, and rope, rope courses and stuff like that. So it was, it was good today, and I did send some pictures to Florenza and everyone just to get them up on the website, that we're doing a lot of joint training with a lot of departments. So some of our, our expenses are up, but a lot of that's going just towards safety and purchasing equipment and training, so. Other than that, we're, we're in a good position, I think. And as I said, we're seeing a big uptick right now again in permits, so I don't have any need for concern with what I'm seeing right now. But that's all I have, so. Thank you.
I just find it so interesting that sewer and water is decreasing, and we're seeing our population increase. Just wondering what else is out there?
It's kind of odd that it's, the usage is down so much in the winter.
How much, how much is it up in the, in the summer? Maybe it's not.
No. Well, we'll have that quarter later.
Yeah. You can learn, you can always tell the story, follow the water and the wastewater, right?
So guys, that's, that's it pretty much, unless we can talk, we could talk about the conference? Or other committee reports?
I'll go first. Just committee reports. The census complete count has a training this Friday, 1 to 3. It's here in this room to train people just about the census and how to talk to neighbors about it, get the word out that it's starting. It's going to be online this year, so I know a lot of people have questions about how to do it online. So I recommend coming here. I don't think it's going to be taped by NCTV-18, but I know Jason will be attending, so can ask him for any questions.
Well, I guess I'm attending now.
I signed up to attend too, but I have another meeting at 1:30, so it won't be very long.
I'll be off island, or else I'd be there.
I'll be there.
And then just MMA conference updates. So the three of us went to the Mass Municipal Association Conference Thursday through Sunday, and the sessions I went to focused on economic development and housing. And I feel like I could talk for an hour about everything I learned, but just the few key points. One of the things about economic development that I realize is so much more of the state is trying to focus on how to bring development to their towns, and they're looking at how to get the high-tech industries, how to get better internet, all these things. And I was thinking, I feel like sometimes we're trying to slow things down here in the summer. So my question to them was, how do we pick things up in the winter? And the panel didn't have an answer to that, but they said they would email me some suggestions. But once we started talking about economic development, everybody immediately went to housing. So everybody in the state is facing this crisis, and it made me realize, you know, Nantucket is unique. We have unique challenges, but everybody else is facing these. We just sometimes have to adapt the solutions. So if we can't really bring high-tech industries to have a campus here, but we still could invest in our internet to bring people here to work remotely and things like that. One of the big housing takeaways I took was the changing demographics. And when you have a younger population moving in, you tend to see them living together. So you'll see a two-bedroom house being rented to two separate young professionals, and they can pay more money in rent, versus if that was to a single family that can't pay that much. And so we're seeing, that's what's helping to inflate the rents. And so if there's a way to provide more studios and one-bedroom apartments that could get young professionals into the correct housing, it would free up other housing. So we actually might have enough housing stock to meet the demand. I know the data platforms that we need a lot for two and three bedrooms, but it might be the case we already have them here, and we might just be able to free them up if we create the right amount of housing. And the location of that housing should be downtown if you want to spur economic development, was one of the other takeaways. And then lastly, that just, it ended with a workshop on racial equity, and I just took a lot out of that. But how do we tap into healing racial tension in communities and building equitable communities? And one of the things Brookline is doing is a third of their marijuana tax revenue is going to racial justice programs and training staff, town staff in the community. And just thought, how do we kind of bring those ideas to Nantucket? That was just the key tidbits of what I got. Those are just the key tidbits of what I got.
One other advantage of going to something like this, you have the sessions, but then you get to meet other select board members, town managers, finance. And so we, we just kind of randomly ran into the chair of the select board in Brookline. And so that's when we got a lot of this information of things that they're doing. They have seventy thousand people in their, in their town, and there's still a select board. Thought that was interesting. And then all that, all their housing initiatives came up and racial equity. For my MMA, I went to a transportation session. And as soon as it went to questions, my hand popped up and I said, what do you think about dockless, micro-mobility bicycle programs? And, because one of the people on the panel, I can't remember which city it was, had a very successful scooter kind of dockless program, which is, we, we don't want to do that here. But so I asked them, how do you make, what's the advice to make our program successful here? Because we're gonna do, we're, we're gonna try to Nantucket. And they said, do a pilot, don't have more than a hundred bikes, and make sure your corrals are thought through, which is all things that we're doing. So my point of bringing this up is, a lot of times when I go to these conferences, you realize the things that we're doing really well. Because usually we only hear about, we're only working on our problems and trying to find solutions. But when you talk to other towns and you realize that we're doing some things right, and that we're sometimes ahead of the curve. And that was one of them. When, when I also told them that the bikes would be electric, all their eyebrows went up. Because there's not many electric dockless bicycle, bicycle share programs around, so we're kind of new in that. But they said that would be more successful because it's more accessible to more people. And, let's see. I went to a recycling, I probably should have talked to this before, Rob. There was, do you remember the gentleman who was leading it? He owned a recycling company, correct?
Yep, I think it was from Republic.
From Republic. They touched five point one million houses a, a day. And he was a big proponent of single-stream recycling. And I, I wanted to talk to him afterwards, but he had about twenty people after the session, kind of asking him questions. So it was, it was interesting. One of the things he said is aluminum is, the commodity is very strong, which made me think, alright, we're getting rid of, I, I have to get rid of my plastic water bottles at the coffee shop, and I'm using, one of them is replacing aluminum. So if I know that, one, it's not plastic, and two, there's a good commodity for it, so our waste options in this town can sell it, that makes me want to use aluminum more. That might change in the future. So it's one little thing I, I learned. And I thought Governor, Governor Baker gave like a thirty-minute speech at one of the sessions, one of the big meetings. And he spent half the time talking about housing. I, I was really surprised how strong he was on it. And one of the things he said was, Boston just became, the Boston area has the highest median house cost in United States, we're number one. He said it wasn't, we don't want to be number one in that, we never won in other things. And I was just, I think, I think I leaned over to Don or, I think it was Christie and said, what's ours? So we, we must bring that average up for the state. But he said Boston, I think it was, was Boston or Massachusetts number one?
In, in assessed values, in Massachusetts, we're number four, because I learned that today, from Debbie Dilworth.
And so he spent.
Part of the upper end.
I just think, I mean, he spent thirty minutes talking about, you know, the, he wasn't really talking about the transfer tax, but he was.
He did, he did.
He dug into it a little bit.
He was talking more about the two-thirds housing choice.
If I didn't, if I didn't steal your thunder, did I?
No, no, no.
So it's interesting to see Governor Baker spend that much time on housing, and kind of calling out certain towns that weren't doing certain initiatives. It was, it was interesting.
He called out the towns that aren't in the green communities.
Yeah.
I was glad we were.
Part of that, yeah. I, I find going to the Mass Municipal Association really helpful, just talking to other people. And I agree with Christie that everybody has the same problems. Just our problems are, have one or two more layers of complexity on them. And then when I, we were talking to the select board member, chair of Brookline, and we said, how many articles are in your town meeting? He said, oh, it's a lot this year, I think we're at twenty-five. And we all chuckled and said, we have a hundred and twenty, a hundred and nineteen this year. I'm sorry? And we went through it, and, and he actually pulled out a piece of paper and wrote this down, he's like, my board's gonna love this. Because they think that, you know, it's a lot, and so those are, those are my.
Was it the town manager from Dennis that we sat with at lunch, where they had two citizens warrant articles? And they were stressed about it?
Well, it's interesting, each people, area we talked about, they would still spend two or three days. So if you have a hundred and twenty articles, if you have twenty-five, it still takes two or three days. So it's interesting, you know, if you have two hours or two weeks to do something, you, you do it in that time. But, so they weren't shorter than ours, it was just less articles.
They spend more time per article, really try to stretch it out.
That's all I have.
I just wanted to add one quick thing, sorry to interrupt. But when Jason mentioned that we're ahead of the curve on so many things, one of the things I took away, I went to an affordable housing workshop, and they had asked about forty people in the room, how many have the housing production plan? And I was one of the only ones that raised our hands. And then they asked how many people have affordable housing trusts, and there was two of us. So we are doing a lot of great work, and we're moving in really good strides. I had to add that in.
Good to hear, no, thank you. The, the one that stood out to me the most that I went to was preparing your community for climate change. And three, three different communities presented sort of their, what they were doing with their MVP grants. And it just, it, it really got me thinking about the opportunity that we have in talking about Harbor Place and being right along the harbor, I mean, along with other things too. But, but any kind of redevelopment in such important areas of the island, the downtown, the waterfront, and even opportunities in the mid-island to incorporate things like year-round housing in some way. But that, but also, they did a lot of like rain gardens and things to just really manage the, the stormwater, put a lot of thought into them. In, in Cambridge, a developer did a building that, I can't, I can't remember what it was called, but it was so efficient that it could be basically completely off the grid for four days. And the temperature would never get below fifty-five degrees or above eighty-two degrees in the building, depending on obviously which season you're in. And they had things where people could still charge things like cell phones built in as, in terms of battery backup within the building. And one thing, when, when you're working with developers, these are kind of ex, extra things that you can negotiate in some ways for them to go, do these extra steps that they wouldn't be required to do under nor, normal, like planning regulations. So it's just, just some interesting tidbits that other people are doing. And I mean, also in Millbury, they, they didn't go to town meeting because they were going for a new school, and they had a two-million-dollar project to redevelop the square and use a lot of the stormwater management and beautification of the area. They cobbled it all together with grants. It was like a hundred thousand here and fifty thousand there, and pieced it all together because they were too nervous to go for, for a debt exclusion when, at the same time as going for a new school.
This made me think about the transportation meeting I went to. They were doing, they were taking away parking and putting in bus lanes, and it was, it was pretty controversial. And they, they said a lot of the opposition was very loud, and that's what was coming to meetings. And so they put a couple tables out during the week and, during the weekend, and just asked people and took surveys, and they got a very different view. And it made me think of us here, like usually the people who are for something don't come out and, and kind of, you know, cheerlead it, they're for it. And if you're against it, it's, you're, you're driven to come to public comment or write letters. And so it was a nice soft way of getting more opinions. Not to do it just to kind of get your way, but they, they found more things out by, by survey. By just putting a table up and everybody putting on orange t-shirts and saying, hey, what do you think about the bus lane? That was helpful, I think about some of our initiatives here.
And I jumped in on that seminar right at the end, and she was saying, she was like, stop doing, you know, town hall type info sessions, because only the people who feel really strongly about it, like one way or the other, are showing up. If you really want like a true temperature of what people are feeling, go and be on the ground. So if you're talking about year-round bus service, go to bus stops, ask the people using the bus, don't just hold a six o'clock meeting.
Right, or one PM meeting where nobody can come.
The other, other seminar I went to, Greg and I both went, was on liquor license regulations and, and entertainment. And kind of the interesting takeaway from that is two of our town council led it, and we already knew everything, pretty much. We've already been through it all. So, you know, it's just also good to know that we're doing our homework and getting good advice and somewhat know what we're doing in some areas.
Libby, what did you take away?
I went to a really good session about social media, and I took a ton of notes and thought about a lot of different things to work on. I tried to get into one about public speaking in the community, was, was like about community civility, but it was so packed, I, I couldn't even get into it. And I went to the recycling one, I think, with Jason and some other people. We went to one about PFAS, went to something about employee evaluations, that was really good. And another one about doing a sort of an audit of your HR department. And that was really interesting as well. I think, I feel like there's one more. Oh, I went to one about your public buildings being resilient and, and how you plan it in at the beginning, but also things you can do along the way. It, it was, the speaker was really good, and he talked about a lot of things like upfront, sometimes the expense to build this stuff in is costly. Over time, you're going to save money and also, not money, not just in things like energy costs, but also things like, he gave this example about a school building. And a lot of times, school building roofs are flat. And so in places where they get a whole lot of snow, you have to go up there and shovel all the snow off. But if you were in the beginning constructing it in such a way that the roof was very well-supported with lots of steel structures and things like that, you wouldn't need to go up on the roof so much or at all. And you need to really know where things are on the roof. He also talked about, you, you really need to have, this is a good lesson for us, a really well-developed facilities function in your town. And as things, or systems are getting more and more complicated, like in this building and the fire building, the, the HVAC systems and the electrical systems and lots of other systems, you need to, you need to be prepared for when the people who are operating them leave. Someone is lined up to understand what that system is and that you have documented policies and procedures about things. So it was, there were a lot of lessons in that, so that was a really good session too.
That sounds like succession planning, kind of.
It kind of is, yep.
For facilities.
Yeah.
The PFAS was interesting, right? Because they, they, not that we want to get into it, but Barnstable just put a twelve-million-dollar operations in for wastewater.
Yeah.
Anything else on MMA?
Well, we did go to the one about the building, building codes. That was kind of interesting. Do you remember?
We did?
Yes, you and I went to it.
There was a lot.
With the building inspector and talking about some, some hor, horrible tragedies of fires and buildings that had been converted, not meeting proper building codes. And, but we did, but actually, what I was going to mention is that we talked to a town assessor afterwards. And, you know, how she has to go in and evaluate what's there and how it is important to communicate back to the building department and actually tell them what's there that might not match what was originally there. And we mentioned to her that we had instituted the tertiary dwelling, and she thought that that was a phenomenal idea in terms of getting some situations that tend to go in after the fact into a legal capacity that's inspected properly. And that we, then we said that our, at that time, our health director had been the one who was a really big proponent of it. And she, she thought it made a lot of sense.
I said one other thing about NCTV eighteen. They went to the big kind of media award ceremony, I think for the state, and they won three big awards. Not just NCTV eighteen, but people have used their services. So they won a for-profit, in the for-profit category. And the, for the recycling game show, I don't know if anybody saw that at all, it was pretty good. The youth category, Nantucket kids won. They did a film on vaping at Nantucket High School, so that won. And then. Really? It was, well, kids did that. And so, you know, with all the facilities at NCTV eighteen. So none of this would be able to happen if we didn't have all of that. And then another, Nantucket Shorts of Humor category, they also won. So coming in strong, NCTV eighteen, everything that they offer.
Do we have any other committee reports? I have a senior center meeting on Friday, hopefully, to get a little bit further with that. Erica, did you have any, any thoughts as a first attendee at MMA?
Sure, I was really excited to be a first-time participant. It was really, really great. I was able to attend the WeMo luncheon and heard Jackie McMullin, among other people, speak, and that was really exciting. I was texting my son saying, do you know her? Do you know who she is? And, and he did, because he saw her on ESPN, so that was a big deal. I went to, I did go to the public speaking and mindfulness, uh, public speaking and civility workshop in the afternoon on Saturday. I mean, on Friday. It was, it was okay, it wasn't anything more than I felt like we were already doing. I also went to a mindfulness workshop, which I thought was really, really great. And this woman from Brown University runs it, and I was thinking it would be a great thing to bring back here and share with our employees in some way, so.
One more motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.